Call the roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Here.
Ms. Sniderware?
Here.
Mr. Sherram. Dr. Bridges. Mr. Jester?
Here.
Colonel Curtis?
Here.
Okay, item four. Resignation of Board Member Eric Sherram. Should I read this resignation? If you'd like. Would you guys like me to read this?
I've read it.
You've read it? Okay.
Of course.
Yep. I'll leave for approval.
Wait a minute, I-
Oh, okay, you're catching up.
Well, I'm locked out.
I don't think we have to approve it because I'm not going to vote on it. I'm abstaining. I don't know what happened. We have to approve it.
I think the board has to approve it.
Yeah, we do.
My understanding. Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Does the board have to approve a resignation?
They should, yes.
And so with three of us, two's enough?
Because I don't want a second.
He can second it.
Can you second it? Did I give the president?
Who made the motion?
The board president.
You can say it.
I second it. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Abstaining.
Ms. Sniderware?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Next item, special guests, special recognitions.
We have no visitors or guests today.
Departmental reports?
Under departmental reports. Of course, we have the written updates for the board. If the board had any questions for that, I'll move on and ask Ms. Ellis to come and give us some of her policy suggestions, updates and revisions.
So, what about the live streaming? Were we skipping it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did skip one.
You went all the way to C.
I did. Six B, yes. Mr. Owens had an emergency, so he did not make it tonight. So, Mr. Dees?
He's sitting over there.
Getting more members. This is my first time in front of you, and it's a pleasure to be here. We put out the RFPs for the live streaming, and we received them. We had received two proposals from two companies. Broadco, Magic 95, and Oklahoma Sports Network. I took that information that I received from them, and I put it in a side-by-side comparison sheet. I think you should have that, just to make it easier for to look at. Going forward, we can accept one of these two proposals as is, or we can send this back out for revisions.
Okay. My first question is, how come they did, Magic 95 didn't fill out this form that we gave them? Did they not need to to answer all the questions?
Um, yeah, you know, I don't know.
I mean, one of them, we have a lot of questions answered, but one of them, we don't. Do we use them to fill out the form when we give them the form? Do they usually have to fill out that form? I mean, this isn't just a letter.
Well, the-
I don't see the form for either.
This one is. This is what we gave them right here. We sent this to them.
I think generally if they hit the content in the form-
Then that's good enough?
When a proposal, in a bid, I don't think it would be, but a proposal is just a starting point.
Okay.
When we do proposals, it means we don't really know what is available, or what can happen. We do them with technology a lot. Like, we did it with, I think there's on the, an emergency purchase order for the pass IDs, where people have to scan their driver's license to get into a building as a visitor. When we started that process, we did not know what was available. And so, we had different things, and it became through a proposal process. And so, it's trying to find your way through the unknown at first.
Okay. All right, well, then, are we going to discuss it? What do you think is best? I asked Tom on Tuesday if this is an action item. He told me it is. So, we can take action and decide on one tonight, right?
Yes.
And-
Or we can ask to do it again.
I don't know that there would be a reason to do it again. I mean, we don't, we don't really do that in RFPs. I mean, we generally send them out, and when they come back, I mean, as you said, it's a proposal. We can, if we thought that was going to gain us something, by doing that. But aren't we just delaying it, and it's making it harder for either company to be able to get their advertising and know if they've got it, so they can move forward?
Well, at this point, what appears to be another course of action would be to have staff meet with the two entities and try to be able to come back with a recommendation. Because at this point, we don't have a recommendation. Typically, we would get a recommendation from staff.
And what staff? What staff are we talking about?
I'm talking about Mr. Dees.
You don't have an opinion?
I don't have a recommendation right now, but if you want me to do that, if that's regressive, I have no problem.
I prefer that that happens.
I don't. I don't, I think we're just delaying it. I mean, Magic 95, I think they have some, something good to say with theirs. I mean, they do have radio, but they're only talking about football. Whereas, the OSN's talking about doing for all our sports. Aren't we here for our children, that we're, we want to do what's best for them? And we all know that a child that gets recognized does better in school, they do better, they're better behaved. There's just so many positives. And as we've seen, I mean, I received three letters, two from McArthur, and one from Walton High, on how the athletes and stuff responded, how well it was received last year to have this live streaming. We don't know about Magic 95's live streaming. I just, I don't know if maybe we want to do an amended deal. Maybe we let Magic 95 maybe have Eisenhower and see how they do with live streaming and radio. Maybe let OSN do the rest for this year, and just do for a year. Come back on it next year.
Well, that would be what he would sit down with and talk to him about.
Right. I know that this has been delayed in its life. But what we need is, we need what's best for the kids.
Right, exactly.
And I just would like for Mr. Dees, and whoever else-
It would be Mr. Owens.
Or Mr. Owens, to get together with them and explore some different ideas.
Like what? Like what ideas? I mean, what are we, what are we talking about? I mean, Magic 95 has said they do not want to do any other sports, because they're not willing to. They want football for all three high schools, which is all the games, which is the big revenue item. That's the big ticket item. So, and OSN's willing to do all these different sports. They've laid it out.
We just made some ideas, and put some ideas out there. There could be others. For instance, maybe they can both be involved. Maybe both, maybe that radio can happen, as well as live broadcasting from Oklahoma Sports Network. Or maybe, after they talk, Mr. Dees comes back and says, "Well, I make the recommendation because I think this one's better." That I think it's better for the district. Usually, the way this would work is they would have had discussions with the people involved with the proposal, and they would have come back with a solid recommendation. That hasn't happened yet.
And why is-
If we could have a, we could have a special board meeting next week, after that occurs, if the two parties are willing to meet with them, and if they're not, at that point, we could go ahead and make a decision.
I just think we've wasted a whole lot of time on a broadcasting issue. When we, and there's so many other issues that's going on in the district, and we're just delaying it again. I thought when we did this, that we were coming up with a final-
Mr. General, I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize, but I'm just confirming with Ms. Ellis. She just received, after four o'clock this afternoon, a legal opinion from Karen Long concerning the streaming policy. And I think, just in talking very briefly with Barbara, we agree that we feel that's something the board should consider before they act on this. Because it does, there are parts of it that do relate to what you're considering.
Okay. Is it something-
I don't mean to inject new issue into the thing, but it's something that, it's information we have, and certainly it ought to be provided to you all before you make your decision.
Can we sit?
Sure.
She can make comments.
Will we make comments?
Mr. Dees, do you think you could meet with them?
Yes, I can, whatever direction you give me, I'm fine with that.
I'm not ready to vote for it.
Well, I haven't waited for it. And so have you.
The second part of it-
We got it too, right?
The second part of it says that it's important to consider that you have potential Title IX ramifications if you don't give female sports-
Talk about it.
Some exposure if you're going to give it to boy, to male sports. So, it's just, it's a warning that I think, I've raised it in discussions, the Title IX issue previously. So, not Karen, but in talking to you all, and I talked to you, Mr. Jester. But I just, I think it's something that you need to be aware of and take into consideration.
Also, Mr. Wade, is this, was this put on the agenda in a manner in which it is an action item tonight?
In my opinion, it's not.
Okay, and that's not what, me and Tom talked about this? This is the way we've been voting on these things for the last couple of board meetings? On everything that comes up with policy, we voted on them. This is how it was laid out in our agenda. I talked to Tom earlier, and he said definitely these are action items.
My question, Mr. Wade, is we've been doing this, well, for, I don't, pretty much, as long as I've been here. This is, the format really hasn't changed much. So, if we, if, if you look at last board meeting, this is the same format. Everything that we voted on last board meeting in these areas was laid out, so-
My reflection in the past is they have not been under departmental reports. They've been under certain specific action items.
For-
Consideration and action concerning-
Well, the policies have been under departmental-
Policies.
And we've been voting on them.
Even on adoption of policies, I think that's true.
Yes. We haven't been, just like you said, I mean, we went over it again. Clarification.
But we talked about in the, I don't have a front policy in front of me, I mean, an agenda in front of me, but-
It's in the minutes.
Let me see. And then, okay, just departmental reports, and then, we used to, I mean, I haven't paid that much attention, but there always has been a, an item concerning action taken. We talked about it on the consent agenda. But the way this is formatted, we don't talk about considering action on any of these policies or the departmental reports. I think, I think the policy-
Especially since the E-meeting business.
That just started, it started since the email.
E-meeting, the E-meeting.
Since we started the E-meeting, it's been formatted that way. I'm not really aware of it, I haven't got it right now.
Denise and I thought.
When, in the monthly review, in the monthly review?
Okay.
So, Mr. Wade, in the monthly review of the agendas, the four board meetings, this part, this, you haven't noticed any concern with this practice up until today?
I haven't, as Ms. Bentley just pointed out, this format changed when we went to the E, went to, went to the computer format. Before, I've always seen-
I haven't reviewed it, but I think it changed prior to that. I don't think the practice has changed much. When we went to departmental format, which has been at least six months, but even prior to that, I don't think we, you know, like, for example, the item we're discussing tonight, last month was listed as, let me find it.
It's under Mike Moore.
It just says, "Mike Moore requests for proposal, live streaming rights, reaction," and the board voted and made an action on that. They made an action on about 12 other items under the same format. And we've been doing that for a considerable amount of time. And I haven't gone back and looked, so-
I mean, mine-
Something I intend to change next board meeting, but if you think we need to stop this, we have to-
My mistake for not noticing it earlier, which I apologize for, but I do think to fully comply with the open meeting law, it says you, you need to talk about the items you're going to talk about, and what action you propose to take. And this agenda does not tell me that you're going to take action on these matters.
So, should we suspend today's board meeting and reconvene at a different time?
We've got a lot of policies that don't say action.
We've got a lot of policies.
And again, Mr. Wade, since the board made an open meeting, they voted in the computer software, but even prior to that, my concern now is, how many board meetings back do we go back?
Well-
Were those legal actions?
We've taken the action, and no one's questioned it in any way, so I would say those, that action has been taken in the past without this becoming a question. I think we leave those as they are now. I think, as far as these are concerned, I certainly, as much as I was on this agenda, and there's really, the only thing that's got any real discussion about is this particular policy, the streaming policy. The others are, pretty much are simply modifications to policy, which are-
Since adoption.
Really, there isn't any need, as I see it, for any discussion about it. Now, the one, I mean, if we've been doing it, and we can read that into this, you know, we talk about down here, well, we don't talk about anything until we get down to, after the, after the, the only place we talk about a vote on here is when we talk about taking the action after the executive session.
No.
And the format of this agenda.
Now, the E-meeting did change some of the delivery options, but I don't think the format or the wording has changed significantly.
Some of them say adoptions.
So, my, and in the program itself, it does say action item.
If it does say, if it does say adoption of, then that's, then that-
That tells you the action.
That tells you if you're going to take action on. If it talks about adoption of.
Say action item.
If you go into the-
Like in the policy, this is revised policy, revision slash adoption.
Now, I don't want to mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Wade, but today is the first time I've ever heard this opinion that our board, are we in error, or should we suspend this meeting and try to have another board meeting?
No, sure, I, under the-
If it's not good for one thing, it's not good for any other.
Exactly.
Well, under, under six C, it says that you're going to consider adopting those items.
Yeah, but there's several boards that don't. I mean, we're jumping. I mean, there's another one that-
Well, the first two say, the adoption, then the child nutrition does not, the standards does not, then the next one says adoption.
The next one says, yeah.
My thought and philosophy in recommending the base position to the board, if we ever feel like at any time we're notified of an error in illegal procedure according to policy or law, that we should probably suspend and redo.
Well, I think those items that we, we just, I think, even though those others say adoption, in the item, in the primary part of it, Barbara Ellis flagged proposed policy revisions slash adoptions, or whatever you call it. That gives you notice that you're going to consider adopting each and every one of them, even though they don't have adoption after. It does not say that in regard to item six B.
But we can vote on six C and C1?
Yep.
The rest of the six C.
Not C2, not C3?
If part of it's wrong, it's all wrong. And we can't knowingly, according to what I learned, going to the, to the new board member and continuing board member education, is if you have, you know, if you realize that there's something wrong in your agenda, then you have to not have the meeting.
Well, now, we could do the personnel, because it's-
I mean, we have, we- We can do everything but six B, the way I read it, because the report of the super, I mean, the six D is just a report on financial information. Your report, Dr. Deegan, just gives, gives an update on the bond issue and the sales tax fund. All those items that are, and the consent agenda talks about items to be approved. Everything else on here is fine, in my opinion. Although, I would say that we ought to have some language on subsequent agendas that says each item is, 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 is to be considered, and possible action will be taken on each item noted on the agenda, or some language to that effect. It's a, it's a very minor addition to make to the agenda, but I think in order to comply, I mean, Ms. Claude Felter brought up the question, that's the only reason I referred to it.
Eight F three says approval, yeah.
Now, Mr. Wade, in your opinion, could we not direct staff to present a contract?
Oh, we can.
Based on-
We can take action.
Disproposing, disproposing.
Anything short of make, adopting-
Contract, it could be voted on later anyway.
Yeah, anything short of final adoption, you're, for what you want them to, any direction you want to get staff to do, to bring back to you, you certainly can do that.
Do we have a contract tonight to consider?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a contract to consider? Do we have a recommendation?
We don't have a recommendation.
So, is there any stopping the board from having this discussion?
No, no, sure.
Do we need to do anything about previous board meetings where we follow this format?
No. We, it's not been, if it hasn't been questioned, I think it's, if it's asleep, we don't want to wake it up.
I think it's a wait.
Yeah, it's a wait, it's a wait.
Well, it's a wait until somebody tells us.
So, do we, on this, on this item, and the subsequent item on the agenda, do we change anything we're doing tonight? Or do we suspend the meeting? Because they're discussing it, we don't have a recommendation unless the board makes a recommendation.
And I asked this question, and so it could have been changed. It could have been asked, you know, and brought up, because I asked this question two days ago, if this was an action item. And I was told, yes, it was. So, the fact that it is now not an action item is concerning.
Well, I'm sorry that I wouldn't ask. I'm sorry I didn't look at it earlier, so I could bring it up on my own. I apologize for that, but I certainly see, there's no reason we can't act on the balance of the agenda.
We can vote to send it back.
I'm certainly not trying to-
We can vote right away.
We can direct, present and direct staff. And that's the way it should be, anyways, the staff should be taking care of this and make recommendations to me to present to you all.
That's not supposed to work.
Well-
And I think the staff would be able to do this quicker, without a board meeting in between. I think, I think if we gave Mr. Dees, just let him do what his assigned duties are, which are meet with the vendors, come up with a proposal, make a recommendation to us. Because right now, he's waiting on our, on the board's recommendation.
Okay, what are we going to ask them to relook at? They've presented their proposal to us on what they wanted to do. What are we asking them to review? What are we looking to gain from that?
Just the proposals and what else is available. I think Mr. Jester had mentioned some options that we could, we could look at, if they could both play a part in this, or, I just, there's probably a lot of things we could try to figure out going forward.
To me, the issue is, is that we have, we have two excellent proposals.
We have two proposals?
Excellent, well, in my opinion, in my opinion, I can say them. We have two excellent proposals. Radio's, radio is a valuable proposal. The live broadcast is valuable. It's very valuable, you know, the idea of the other sports. And after we will see this, it's really important, apparently, that we are concerned about Title IX. And it even brings up some questions about the proposal that was, we're going to include other sports. Because you need to be prepared to think about it full time.
You have to look at percentages, Mr. Dees.
Okay, now, we gave, we sent out, we worked on this form that we wanted to send to them, and our RFP, and we sent it out. And they filled it out, they have all of this information that they could do. I just don't understand why we need them to do it again. Why we need to go back and revise it? We don't do that on the RFP.
It's a request for proposal, and it allows him to meet with the vendors and try to hash out the best deal we can get for our kids.
Okay, that's, that's all well and good that you're saying that on this, but we don't do this on anything else.
I agree.
No, we don't. And we're going to come to something here later on, and we're going, I'm going to bring up that we didn't do it on. And so-
We don't always do it.
But it doesn't make any sense to me why we just keep delaying it. I know we're going to have to, because obviously, we can't, it's not an action item. So, we're going to have to. But my question is, exactly what are you going to ask them to review? Are we asking them for more money? Are we asking them to-
I think that could be a part of it, and like I said, this-
Because last year, we didn't even want, there was not even money, whether they even considered it, this contract. We just awarded the contract, nothing was ever said about money or anything. And now, is that a consideration or concern about money?
It wasn't anything we asked, it's something the vendors offered.
You know, until I'm saying, are we going back and asking them to review more money? Is that going to be something we-
We're going to ask them to meet with them and discuss options, to see if they can either come up with a way to work together, so that we could have all of this, solve the problem now of the girls being covered.
It's solved, don't you?
It isn't solved.
It depends on one of them.
Again, one of them has a percentage.
It has a-
I mean, we'd give it the same format, he could have just checked it.
But you can look at the numbers that participate, don't you, Mr. Dees?
I don't know how the Title IX works, but I also know that he was given this form with all of these things on it, right here, everything, and this is what he sent in a letter that he wanted to do. So, I don't, I just, I guess I don't understand why we need to go back and ask him if he wants to now fill out this form.
Mr. Wade, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Title IX is a consideration. Is Title IX considered with equity, sameness across the sports for all, both female and male sports?
Yes.
In this case, is there an equitable distribution of female sports being broadcast to male sports?
Well, under the proposal, the only female sports-
No.
I didn't, but is, is the proposal to sign the cast girls?
Mr. Dees, which-
Stream both girls and boys basketball, or just boys basketball?
Mr. Dees, which female sports are identified, and which male sports are identified?
Uh, softball. And basketball, the girls.
Softball.
Um, softball and volleyball, soccer.
How many, how many, how many softball, basketball, girls' basketball, volleyball and soccer are identified as being broadcast?
Ten games in basketball.
Are they identified as female?
They said they would broadcast the boys and girls.
And say how many of each, yeah.
They said it says a minimum of ten games for basketball for boys and girls. For softball, it says a minimum of games of five games. Soccer, minimum of games of three, and volleyball, minimum of three.
And volleyball is only a girl's sport, is it not?
Softball's only a girl's.
How many male sports are?
We have all football games.
And that is thirty?
Yes.
Okay. All basketball?
Then we have all basketball, well, ten games of basketball.
Ten basketball.
Have baseball, minimum of five games. Soccer, three games, same as the girls. And then wrestling, which could be coed, a minimum of two matches.
The only one that's weighted in favor of the boys heavily is football, which the girls are going to field football.
Right.
But if we go down the Title IX route, don't we need to consider equitable representation of female and male sports?
I think you have.
Because right here, we have a, it's disproportionately male sports. I'm just saying, if Mr. Dees has to create a proposal that covers Title IX issues with, then we need to, we need to make that clear.
Yeah, but, I mean, now, you're, you don't have anything that's equitable for girls, same as football. It's the same thing when Title IX came up, when it started talking about equipment. You're not going to spend as much, same amount of money on a girls' basketball team, volleyball team, as you are on a boys' football team. Their equipment don't cost the same, so they're going to go across.
What Title IX requires in each, in each particular sport, I mean, you offer volleyball as an offset. It's, it's season is during, for girls, is during the boys' football season. But then, and that's not, you know, that's not near as costly, obviously, as putting a boy in a football uniform, but it's, it gives the girls something competitive that they can do during that time of the year. Everything else, except for wrestling, is the only other sport that girls don't have a comparable sport. So, I think, I think, just glancing at this proposal, this is the first time I had seen it. It looks like it, it does have an equitable distribution between male and female sports, as far as the proposal goes.
Well, that's something he can review and look at.
I mean, this is-
What I'm questioning is, if, if Title IX is now a concern, it's never been a concern in any of our broadcast agreements in the past. We've always just done football and whatever they wanted to, and basketball. Do we need to make Title IX provision a part of the RFP?
And the policy.
Because then we need to go back and revisit that.
Well, I think it's actually a question to pose to Ms. Long, because she's the one that brought it up in the legal opinion, but it appears that it's something we need to consider. And she's much more the Title IX expert than I am, although I'm well acquainted with Title IX. She's dealt with-
Because we didn't have anything about Title IX, and I don't know if broad, I mean, it's a new thing to me. If Title IX should be considered broadcast contracts, I've never heard that, so if we need to do that-
Says equivalent to.
Broadcast?
It, it has to be, girls' sports are covered in a manner equivalent to boys'.
Yeah, like we said, the broadcast, the outside entities, so what I'm wondering is if the RFP needs to include that.
Yeah.
And so.
Well, I, I think it, now that it's been brought, to, when Mr. Dees goes back and, and asks both of them if they, if they would want to propose any additional coverage of girl's sports, then they ought to come forth, if we're going to allow them to amend their proposals.
Would it, would it be feasible for you to direct staff to find out about this Title IX through our attorney and see if, if this proposal that includes these additional sports is, is going to be enough, appropriate enough, or not, and then let him, allow him to meet with the vendors and, and allow them to, to make any adjustments, and again, any ideas that they can do to make this work better, even including both of them being involved, you know, one could do radio, and one could do live broadcasting possible.
Yeah.
And we could also, you know, cover this, because this is a, this is a major concern, this Title IX, we have to make sure we're doing that properly, we, we know this has taken a long time, but this has been a complicated issue, and we had to, had to resolve it, and we still have to.
Have to be.
Make sure that we don't make a big mistake here. Do you think it'd be feasible, I mean, to try to find out, I mean, it may not, it may take more time, but.
Is the board open to the possibility that with Title IX considerations and new RFP, it should be by staff, according to attorney's guidelines, be prepared and resubmitted? Because if Title IX is now a consideration that the board?
I, I think that, I don't, I mean, if we're going to do another, what do you mean?
What I mean is, given to Mr. Dees, and based on his contact with the attorneys, do whatever we need to do to get this done.
And then, but then we don't have to come back and vote on that, and then go back out?
The board has to vote on the contract, no matter what.
The contract, we wouldn't necessarily have to.
That's what I'm asking.
But usually, if I was, you know, one of the issues is.
We wouldn't have to necessarily vote on that.
Now, these are RFPs, now.
Yeah, one of the issues is, usually, staff handles RFPs, usually, staff handles the whole process, brings forth a recommendation to the board, this process has been a little different, because staff, because the board has been directing staff how to handle an RFP, and so the staff is waiting for feedback to the board, that can only happen at a, at a regular point of board meeting, so if, if staff were given, if Mr. Dees were allowed to just do this, I think he could come up with something a lot quicker.
And make a recommendation.
And he'll work with our attorney, now, you have to work with your attorney, so.
Okay, so again, back to my question, so we don't have to bring it back to us, and then we have to okay the new RFP, then you have to send it out to the contract, we don't have to do any of that, you're just going to revise it, adding the Title IX.
The way I understand it is.
Once they all come vendors, and then come back to us.
And I think Mr. Wade has already told us that we probably should work with Karen on this, this issue of.
Since she wrote it.
Since Karen is the one who's with the memorandum, she's the one that's going to answer the questions on the Title IX, if it's asked by the Title IX departments, because she's the one that brought it up, so she's the one that's going to be responsible.
And hopefully, it could happen quickly, they could turn around new RFP, meet with the vendors, and, and come back with a recommendation.
I mean, to inform you of this, the coaches' meeting is coming up, I leave Saturday, and that will be, I'll be out of town for a week from Saturday, and I'll be back in town late Thursday, so that's got to be taken into consideration also.
Regular meetings at seven, correct?
No, I don't think we can, we need to wait till the seventh, I mean, that's a long way. I mean, if, you don't leave until this Saturday?
I leave Saturday.
So, you have to contact the vendors in the morning?
Uh, we have scheduled meetings, we have a retreat, I would have to.
Yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow is locked up for district leadership, it's our first back to year, back to school.
So, there ain't no way we can have a special board meeting next week? So, that's what you're saying now?
No.
No, we'll.
I'm, I don't know, my, usually, when, this process happens behind the scenes with staff, all the time, in a pretty quick, efficient manner, that's equitable to vendors, right now, we're doing a process where the board is telling staff what to do, the staff's waiting to come back to hear what the board wants to do, and so that's made it extremely long process, the week, next week is just an unfortunate, just reality, it's Coach's Clinic, all the coaches and athletic directors are in, is it Tulsa this year?
In Tulsa, yeah.
Well, I get the feeling everybody knew they weren't going to vote on this, except me, I thought we were voting on it tonight, but I get the feeling everybody else didn't think we were.
I don't, I thought the board was going to direct us on the next step up.
I wasn't comfortable with that.
It's a, it's a different process, this is a new process for us.
So, what are we saying? How long are we taking, I mean, we're kind of talking in a little bit of a circle, so are we going to, I agree that Magic 95 needs to be given Title IX information, and so does OSN, to be make sure that they have, you know, covered it, and that Magic 95 knows they need to include it, so, I mean, I agree with all of that, and we're going, and we can vote on it anyway, but I don't like the fact that we're waiting so long for either vendor.
Nobody likes it.
You know, I mean, this is, this is just making something hard, just seems like we have a lot of bigger issues that we, we decide a lot easier than we are on this one.
Dr. Dees, if you would have me, I would be happy to submit a question to Karen, and since, uh, since Mr. Dees is not going to be available, I, I would be happy to be the contact person to get, to him and give an answer back to you.
They got a policy issue, Ms. Ellis, that's her role, she can do that with Ms., she can do that with Ms. Long anytime, she will be here next week, you're not coaching, are you, Ms. Ellis? She's not coaching.
Well, and, I mean, you'll be, but you may.
I've been on it two years, I'm a little occupied, I'm over here.
You're going to be.
Oh, I'm going to be a coaching meeting this year.
I'm not coaching.
Okay, so she'll be here.
She'll get it, she'll get it moving forward.
It sounds like we should get everything across, except the meeting.
With the vendors, and do that first thing when you're back.
And I can get with Rick, and we can work on that, and, and we can get that done.
And just as an example, the card ID system, they worked on that, Ms. Cordis, did you work on that for six, eight months?
Okay, well, that's.
Back and forth.
It's all lax.
But it's an art, but the process that happens behind the scenes is.
Not about the process, but we're not using the same, but anyway, let's see.
I mean, here's, here's the difficulty, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
According to policy, the staff does these processes at the direction of superintendent of the board, and brings back a recommendation, at this point, the staff is waiting, it, it, the process is, is backwards, if, and it makes it difficult for the staff to get their job done, if they're waiting every two weeks for a board meeting, et cetera, and so, my recommendation, well, that's the problem.
We just need to get out of their way.
So.
The problem is, is, you know, purchasing, they do these dozens and dozens of times a year, every department does RFPs and bids and proposals all the time without, and it's a pretty efficient process, and I think the staff can handle it, I really do, I trust, Mr. Dees is.
That's all fine, but I was concerned about when we're going to come back and meet, I trust them, I just don't understand when we're going to come back and meet, so if he's coming back, when are you coming back?
I'll be back Thursday night, so I'll be.
So, couldn't they meet that Friday, and then we, maybe we have a board meeting on that Monday? Who knows?
I have to wait till the staff tells me how this works sometimes, it's their department, they know best, they have to, we have to give them the freedom to do the job they need to do, that's the bottom line, I, I would like them to be able to do it at a certain amount of time, but I haven't had a chance to consult Mr. Dees on when this could happen, he, he doesn't have a schedule in front of him, again, we've got to have, if we're going to let staff do this, we need to let staff do this, if we're going to do it as a board, we can do it as a board.
If, if there's an opportunity to come in sooner.
I can assure you, the staff will do everything they can to get done as fast as they possibly can, nobody wants this to linger any further past.
Oh, yeah, we do.
I, nobody wants this to linger.
We'd let it linger a long time, okay, but let's move on.
But the process is, has been slow, because it's been tied to board meetings.
Yeah, really, all right.
So, at this point, I'm going to need direction from the board.
Mr. Dees, get on it.
So.
I say, let you direct staff to, to explore the Title IX implications, and put out another RFP that addresses that, and also, I would hope that you would be able to meet with both vendors, and see if we can come up with a proposal that might include both.
Okay.
Mr. Dees? Good, I don't mind, Karen, I don't really think you need to go as far as to direct them to request new RFPs, if they just amend their, make an amendment if they want to.
Yeah, they can amend them, whatever.
They can amend it, yes.
Cover, cover this area that we, we discussed.
They could speed things up.
Yeah.
But, I can guess.
Not yet, I mean, functionally, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, it's just, the big question to me is, the board going to handle it, or the staff going to handle it? Because we can go, I believe Mr. Dees and his staff can move a lot faster, if we don't have to wait on the board meeting for feedback, et cetera, they'll bring a recommendation, and the board can direct us to change, modify, et cetera, it's just a, it's a different process for us, we're not used to doing things this way, so it makes it difficult.
Well, and Ms. Ellis may want to revise the policy as well, with the Title IX in it.
I'll speak to that community.
Mr. Dees, you are on the spot tonight, aren't you?
Welcome to here.
If you were wondering where the spot was, just look down, you're on it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dees.
There she is.
As I come forward, I'm going to say, I, on the way in, I said, "Mr. Dees, my heart will be with you, this will be your first time speaking to the board," and I didn't realize that I was going to put him in a predicament with this particular conversation, but what I will tell you is, that from my opinion at this point, though the Title IX is a consideration that needs to be completed, it doesn't necessarily have to be in this policy, it simply needs to be considered with everything that we do, we have a Title IX policy.
Thank you.
And it's covered somewhere.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I do apologize to the board for that consideration at this particular time.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad that your section has revisions and adoptions at the beginning of it.
Yes.
Thank you, six C is okay, so everything under six C, one, two, three, four can be done.
As I present the policies to you, I will give you a little bit of background on policy six C one, policy BEF, Board of Education Minutes, that would be a new policy, hence it says adoption, and it simply has been provided by OSSBA as a possibility of placing this, because we don't have a policy that is concerned with board minutes, so if you review that and you have questions, I'll be very glad to consider those.
I'll need for approval. All right, I'll second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Claude Filter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Can I move forward?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I don't know why.
I just wanted to make sure.
Point on the computer, lady.
Of her, okay, not us. It's like, yeah.
Can I move forward?
On me, yeah.
Okay, on policies.
This is day driven.
Six C two, policy COP, the child nutrition, nutrition meal charging policy, simply adds a piece that indicates that special dietary needs can be accommodated for any child where we've been made aware that there is a consideration, and there will be additional medical information to follow, that will be collected by the appropriate personnel, we want to make sure that we don't put any of our children in jeopardy, because we have the information, but we don't have the medical information.
Well, doesn't it also add the, the child who brings money to school?
Yes, that's policy CO.
I get ahead of it.
Policy COR is the policy for special dietary needs, and policy COP, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm, COP.
Okay, I got you.
Talks to, one is the regulation, one is the policy amendment.
I don't see the C.
I don't either.
I don't see COR.
I don't either, that's, he's the next one on our agenda.
Yeah, we don't see COR.
Let me take my paper.
I was like.
That's why I'm confused.
I'm just.
I'm just.
Policy COR draft.
Ah, it's a draft.
Item ten, special dietary needs will be met when the district is made aware of a medical condition, is the first change.
We don't have COR.
That didn't get in our agenda.
We don't have it.
We just have COP on our agenda.
Okay, there should be a COP and a COR, I'll get that back to you at the next meeting, if you would.
Now I'm not confused anymore.
We haven't got to COP yet.
She was talking about a different one than we were looking at, that's why, that's why I was confused.
I have two policies, not just one, policy COP, child nutrition meal policy, indicates that a child cannot be denied a meal, because they don't have the correct amount of money on their account for that day's meals, there is a provision in place that even though they may have a negative balance, we will not deny a meal to a child on that particular day. And that is policy COP, and I, again.
So, here's my question, just to want to clarify on it.
Yes.
So, let's say a child has a negative five dollars on his account, but he, but the meal costs three dollars and twenty cents, and he brings that for that day, he can pay that meal that day, regardless of the negative balance, is that what you're saying, is that what this is saying?
It's saying that if a child has a negative balance, and he is going to be a regular consumer of a meal, that he will be given a meal for that day, and then, child nutrition and the school agencies will take care of the billing part of it later, we will not deny the child a meal, and that's all we're considering in this particular piece.
Okay, because it says that to a student who brings money to school, that, for that day's meals, that's what's confusing me.
So, is that the only people that get to eat, or is it everybody?
No, if the child has a, an account, let me go back to that portion, if the child has an account, and they don't have enough money on that account, and it's going to be a negative balance for that day.
I see.
That child will still be allowed to eat.
Keep the balance at a minimum.
The regular lunch on that day. If the child has a negative balance, there are other considerations that should have already been made by the Child Nutrition Agency, or representative at that building.
Okay.
As long as the kids get to eat.
As long as they get up to eat.
I'm good with it.
And even if they have some, a negative balance, they will be provided with a meal, but there's another, another consideration already in policy for that.
Well, yeah, we have, so, okay, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Claude Filter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
The next item is policy DC, DBCA, Standards of Performance and Conduct for Teachers, this is a revision of policy.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Of current policy that we have, and the language simply conforms to the current terminology for probational and career teachers.
So, it's to everybody now? Questions? I'll move for approval.
Do I have to second you?
Yeah, if you and I get worked today.
I'm not supposed to, if you refuse to, I can.
I would, no, I'm good, but it's our second. She's second.
Ms. Claude Filter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Item six C five, policy DOAC, Support Personnel Suspension Demotion or Termination. A revision from the Oklahoma State School Boards Association indicates that we needed to amend our policy on item thirty-one and we added thirty-two.
The next one on our deal is Certification Reimbursement Program.
But, see, if you have it in paper, you could flip around.
DMB dash R two is the next one on our deal. Our policy's fun. We all love it.
Thank you so much for keeping me aligned. I didn't check that one.
I was just going with you.
She was finding it. She's flipping back and forth like mad over here.
Policy DMB dash R two is a regulation policy and it is a new policy for simply 2017, 2018, to request reimbursement for teacher certification examinations by those who are required to take teacher certification examinations and do pass them. And that is a request that would be submitted to the State Department.
I put my, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call girl, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Now we got your Support Personnel Suspension.
Policy DOAC.
Yes, ma'am.
Item six C five, Support Personnel Suspension Demotion or Termination. Again, items thirty-one and thirty-two.
On thirty-one, so what we're saying is that the teachers are not supposed to make any personal phone calls or receive personal phone calls or texts or use their social media during the time that they actually have children in front of them that are teaching.
Yes, but it doesn't simply refer to teachers. It refers to all personnel. And so we changed the language, saying that it's to be kept at a minimum, simply because sometimes an emergency exists even for that teacher in the classroom. We didn't want to prohibit entirely. We'd lose a lot of personnel.
So who do we, how does that get reinforced? I mean, I mean, who actually reinforces something like that?
The supervisor for the individual and it will have to do with job performance. It'll be addressed in that way.
Like in, okay, let's see, but the social media is not allowed.
Okay, on item two, the use of social media is prohibited during work hours unless it's related to job performance, which applies to.
It's the next one.
This is item thirty-two.
I think the confusion is there's a revised, I don't think, there was a revision on that policy, that, that line.
I didn't get.
In the paper copy, we didn't reprint a new one. On the, online, there's, the, the original line was made into two, she split into two. So now that way, we separated telephones and texting, which had become so commonplace nowadays, a staff member.
So you're putting on it twice in another.
And then the other one made social media an entirely, a tiredly different issue.
But it'll all be on one policy.
Yeah, same policy, but they're different issues.
Okay, got you.
You know, ten years ago, cell phones weren't quite as, even texting wasn't quite as popular as now.
No, it's prevalent now.
So I apologize, Ms. Claude Felter. The copy you have has been updated since you received that.
Okay, well, you're going to need to do that now. That's confusing.
Oh, so can I make a motion to approve both the revisions on DOAC?
Can I bring these to you?
Sure.
You'll have a chance to see.
Well, we've got, yeah, I don't. She didn't get it. I can't, I think we made a difference.
Item thirty-one and thirty-two were split.
Okay, they're in the, I see what you're saying, but not on the, yeah, not on the paper copy. So you read it and then you tell me if you're ready. Oh, I, I think she's ready, okay. I move for approval of DOAC, both revisions. I, I second.
Call girl, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
On policy six C six, policy FE, the transfer policy, transfers and assignments, and the only thing that we're asking to do here is to eliminate putting the application for the transfer in policy because they change frequently. We've had two changes since we adopted the policy. So for FE E one and for FE E two, the application would be separated and would be placed online on the Lawton Public Schools website under forms.
Streamline it a little bit for you.
That's the language that's on page one of five in FE and in FER one.
Make a motion. Go ahead. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept policy FE and FER one.
Second.
Call girl, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
And as usual, Ms. Ellis, thank you for all your hard work and awesome.
I appreciate that, but thank you for allowing me to confuse you tonight.
Oh, you, I wasn't confused. I had it in the paper.
It's nice with the paper. Six D.
Okay, we're ready for six D? Tom Branson?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll try to do. Found extra money. Come on. You found extra money, right?
Well, let me say that on page one, you will see what I would say is a snapshot of where we were on June thirtieth when we closed and that's simply all that is, is a snapshot of what the cash we had in the bank. That doesn't really tell the story. That just tells you where we were on that given day. So as you can see, the fund balance on June thirtieth, 2016, which was a year ago, the district closed with twenty-six million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. As we moved over to, a little further over to the right, when we closed this June, on June thirtieth, 2017, the school district had thirty-six million, three fifty-one, six twenty-two oh four. I will give you a little bit more history as to why we are there. Obviously, this year, when we closed, the state did not, we did not take the cut that we had originally anticipated taking. So in the last week of the month, they did give us back a million dollars, so.
Yay.
So, but keep that in mind as we move forward, okay? But anyway, so you can see it, after the hash mark, the lines below it, I take into consideration, the general fund obviously is the largest one of all. When we closed, we had sixteen million dollars in the bank. I've always tried to separate that general fund so that you would always be able to tell what part of it belonged to the district and what part of it were all the federal funds. That's what they are broken down below that. So, and then I also have to take out what we consider the inventories and then also what purchase orders that roll over into the next year that you don't see in that figure because obviously, you know, the utility bills and that sort of thing that we will then have to pay in the month of July. So when you get to the bottom, on the far bottom right-hand corner, the net fund balance for the general fund, the district portion of the general fund is sixteen million, three twenty-six, oh sixty-four, oh sixty-eight, point seventy-four. So as we move to the second page is where I'll tell you a little bit more of the story, okay? Obviously, we ended with sixteen million dollars, so from that moment on till we set the budget in September, these are some of the things that we predict are going to happen. Obviously, it's a projection at this point. We've been telling you for many, for several years that the district is going to take a drop due to our enrollment and I will say we have arrived and we are there. We anticipated it to be about a two million dollar drop and then on top of that state cut that we would have taken last year, that we did, which was only a million, I'm expecting to take that same cut again this year, okay? So that's another two million and obviously, we needed a little bit extra money to complete our textbook purchases, some, the staff development, all the state funding has been cut. We have been starting to get some of those allocations. The career tech, I got that one the other day before, I got them after this was already printed. So staff development, we're not going to get. Our alternative ed is going to be cut, our career tech, our ag, all of those, family and consumer science, our STEM, all of those have been cut. So on top of that, obviously, we give our regular step increases, which is going to be another million too. That's normal. That's not any other raise that was on the table. That's just our normal step increases. And then we also are going to purchase our category two equipment. With that two hundred thousand dollars that we are paying, we are getting a far more, greater value with that two hundred thousand dollars. So in a nutshell, by the time we set the budget in September, we went from sixteen million dollars down to ten very quickly. So that's where we're hoping to be when, in our cash carryover or revenue shortfall in September when we set the budget. Below that, you can see where we've been in the last two to three years, at the end of each of the times we set the budget, at the 2015, 16, 17, and 18. So you see that we have been very frugal preparing for this drop in our enrollment. So that's where we're at, at this moment, our projection would be. Now, let me give you a little bit more information that, again, I did not have when we presented or prepared this agenda. We did receive our state aid on Monday, late Monday afternoon, and I now have that information. Let me go back in time and tell you that in the last ten years, I didn't have time to go back further because I'd have to go to the basement. In the last ten years, the school district's state aid, when we closed in 2009, was sixty-two million dollars. Take that in, sixty-two million dollars. In the next nine years, we averaged approximately fifty-two million dollars. Okay? When we closed last year, again, they gave us back a million, we closed at fifty million. Our state aid this year is at forty-nine, seven hundred. So we went from sixty-one million dollars down to forty-nine million dollars, which is a drop of twelve million dollars.
Wow.
So that is why we have been preparing for this and that is why this money is sitting here, preparing to be able to shore up the district for the next two to three years, to take obviously a large cut. Now, just from the last year to this year, it's already another million. Now, I will say, even when we move into next year, we will take another million dollar cut due to the enrollment.
Enrollment decrease.
Decrease. And more than likely, unless our enrollment increases, you'll take another one the following year. Okay? Now, with that said, the school district is in, is in great shape at this moment in time because of us preparing and saving and realizing what was, what was happening to the school district. I will say one thing too, in closing, that when they set this allocation, I fully assumed that they would use what's called a factor. It's approximately three thousand dollars per student is what we ended with on June thirtieth of last year. That was the factor that the state was using. When they gave me this allocation on Monday, they said that the factor was going to increase by thirty-six dollars per student. In discussions and conversations with my colleagues across the state, we all agree that we don't think that forty-nine million dollars is even going to hold up because they're saying it's an increase. And I'm not sure whether they're going to get that increase to give to us.
That's accurate.
That doesn't make sense to any of us, so. But we are prepared. I believe the school district is in great shape and as we move forward, I hope that this all works out. Well, I believe it will.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for working so hard to help us keep our heads above water.
As we move forward.
Yeah, not only that, but I mean, the district is making all the best strides in all areas, even with the budget cuts.
Yes.
May I add, with your permission, Ms. Branson, the three thousand dollars, the thirty-six dollars adds up to about six hundred, thirty-six times weighted, it is about twenty-two thousand.
About another eight to nine hundred thousand.
So that adds a good six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That kind of overestimated what we expect to get. But one thing Ms. Branson and I have been looking at, in our last board meeting, I did a little update about the need to address certified staff, weighted teacher, teacher salaries, which we'll have a recommendation at the next board meeting to do so. But I want to, an update on the thinking right now, both of our hearts want to give every penny that we have extra into that, but we also know we need to be able to pay the bills in the next two years. So right now, we're trying to pinpoint that amount that we can bank and pay for for two years now. That way, we know we've got it covered and we're responsibly doing it. So we're going to do the maximum that we can and pay for two years right now. That's a good limiter. That keeps us, our, our hearts, getting our heads in trouble, but, but we're going to do that with that strategy. If we can bank it for two years, I think it's a pretty responsible bet that we'll be able to carry it on the third, the fourth, the fifth. But once you add that, you know, every, every thousand dollars, for example, for a certified staff member across the board, adds a million to the budget, not only this year, but next year. And so that's the consideration. I just wanted to kind of, that's what we're thinking. If we can bank it for two years responsibly, we're going to do it.
And that's going to be on the seventh.
We're having on the next agenda.
Okay, great. Because it's been heavy on my mind, wondering if we were going to be able to do it for one year, two years, how we were going to be able to.
What we're looking at, we've considered, we've considered stipend, we've considered everything. What we want to do is something permanent, to permanently raise our salary scale for certified, just like last year, we did support salary, a quarter an hour, which added up to about five hundred dollars for a twelve-month worker. But on this, we need to do it across the salary scale for all salaries. In addition to that, we want to add a step a year till we get up past those twenty-nine, thirty years. So everybody can be touched this year.
I want to give everyone, you know, as much as we can, wholeheartedly behind it. I just want to make sure we can pay for it.
That's the, that's what we're thinking. If we can bank it for two years, we think, that's a good strategy. Okay, it's, it's a check on our heart to make sure we don't, our heads have got to figure out, we've got to pay the bills in three years. So I just think at this point, the way the state's going, recruiting teachers, we've got to do absolutely as much as we can. So that's the strategy we're working on and we'll have a recommendation for you next board meeting.
And then so, well, board members remember here, so when our carryover wasn't near what it is today. And that is scary.
We got a little, we, we got some unexpected bumps this year. We're going to reinvest that in staff.
Yeah.
And so, thank you, Ms. Branson.
Thank you.
That was a great, um.
Report to the superintendent?
Mine, well, it's pretty simple. On item A, we have the bond sales tax funds and nothing's changed much. Now that schools started, I'm just going to give a little update on the bond and sales tax committee. We ended our last committee in April and part of that bond and sales tax committee, we are going to be inviting some more members to be in the committee. I didn't want to do that over the summer, it's just so hard to catch anybody. But once August hits, I'll start the process with the committee. They've suggested some different members of the community. We've had some group members move out, we've had some, we don't want it to be a life sentence to be on the bond oversight committee, but we do have several. So by November, we'll have some additional members to the committee. We'll bring those to the board in October for approval and that way, when the board, when the oversight committee meets, we'll have that, some additional members on it. But the members are, they've got a good idea of some, some recommendations for the community and I appreciate those members, but any questions on the bond or sales tax funds? Otherwise, on my superdenics announcement, I don't have any.
Okay, item A is the consent agenda. Do we have any items that need to be removed?
Okay, I want to discuss the request for the issue of purchase orders for these AIP architect fees for these HVAC systems. We talked about this a little bit before the board meeting started and my question was, what we're proving was just, what is this non-money for? Why are we not putting this out? We're just awarding AIP a lot of money here. Should we not be putting these up for RFPs to where we're getting more competitive with these things? And I know we're going to talk about the issue at the time, but we're not going to talk about that because it's past that.
Well, on the, Mr. Jester and Mr. Smith are not here tonight.
Mr. Jester is.
I mean, not Mr. Jester. Mr. Ledford.
Ledford.
Mr. Ledford and Mr. Smith are here tonight. I had a quick phone call with Mr., with the architect. We have not changed how we've done architects. We did, we have discussed before the board several times the RFQ process, which we haven't pursued. Mr. Smith and Mr. Jester have not pursued the RFQ process. But at this point, I believe on these, we had direction to board two board meetings to prepare those, the goal. But the question we had about how they came up with that specific amount, I was unable to get that information from Mr. Graves. So if we have any doubt, what we can do is we can table this for the next board meeting.
I would like to know what we're, this is an awful lot of money for things that are HVAC systems, that we don't really know why we're giving them this money, if this goes, what it goes towards, what are, what are we looking at? My understanding was that it was probably six percent of what the total, total project was.
When you pay the final bill.
What? He didn't act like, when you were telling him that that was correct. So, you know, I'm just, my, my concern is just, it's a lot of money.
Well, they don't charge a six percent to draw up the initial plans. My understanding is a percentage. I got cut off before I'd get the exact percentage. So if we have to wait on the question till Mr. Jester and Mr. Smith are in attendance, then I'm going to do it.
Mr. Jester's here.
I mean, Mr. Ledford, I'm just going to say Kent Kyle.
He's here.
If you want to wait till Kent and Kyle are in attendance, it won't hurt to wait till next board meeting.
It's not going to hold anything up.
I mean, it will, but I'd rather know than, because I.
I'd rather know. I mean, I don't.
I'd say we just table those items and.
You know, I mean, that's just my, well, I'd rather know what we're spending this money on, you know, what it exactly goes for before we just approve it and then later on down the road, oh, well, we thought this is what this is for.
This is to draw up the plans so they can prepare the bills.
I know, but I'll need to know, were they getting their money? I mean, look at all of these ones we are just awarding to AIP.
Exactly, because that's our architect.
No, it isn't. I mean, we can't just pick an architect and go, this is the architect and we're just award you all, all of our business.
Carla, we, we asked you to approve that action.
Last time.
Give me a second, I can look back at which board meeting.
That's why my stuff's in, in printing now. I have it printed because I don't want to be confused as I have been a couple of board meetings.
Now, I guess, I'd have to ask Kent Kyle which board meeting. Give me a second.
We were, we were.
We had the presentation of the needs and there's a $2.6 million and the board directed us to prepare these for submission.
To move forward.
And so, um, we had the discussion, we discussed AIP, we approved AIP as the, and directed staff to move forward. This is the result of that.
I still would like to know what this non-money is for.
And I say, to find it out, we will um.
If there was a problem, Mr. Smith provided some information that, information gathered and how these, this firm was, had already done some work on, on these specific projects and that they were ready to move forward on all of them without any, they would not have any time delay because of the volume as far as performing the work.
And Mr. Graves was actually here, he actually approved the, or, and Mr. Graves, the chief architect, actually approached the podium.
Yeah. I understand that, but my understanding at the time was that we were approving the ones that we had already put out the bid so that those could get moved forward and that was why we didn't go and do anything different with those.
That's the ones that we already left on the bond, you're right.
Yeah, these are the, um, these are the ones to move forward before, so we can get an idea of, um, on the ones that are left over from 2004.
So if we approve.
I'm getting confused now.
Okay, I know, it's confusing to me, that's why I like to be, you know, clarified on things. Um, if we go ahead and approve these tonight, then we're saying we're gonna give them this money and they're going to sit these out for bid.
They're gonna prepare, they don't set them out to bid until we tell them.
That's what I'm saying.
But in order to, to, to be able to gauge whether or not, we have enough money, we know we have enough money for these, but it's how to structure this money. We have to get some sort of, of, of plans in place because we can't even start the bid process. If we don't have the money in place, we can't do a bid.
Right.
Because then we're asking people to do a lot of work.
This is to draw up the plans and come up with the, the bid documents.
Okay, so that's what, that's what this money's for, is to do that.
I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use an example, Douglas, we drew up the plans for Douglas windows replacement over a year and a half ago, but we have not acted on it yet. These need to be in place for us to act upon, because they're left over, what is it, 13 years now?
Yeah.
Um, in order, the presentation that I gave about, we do have the money available over time, if we can figure out much this costs, we can make a decision on whether or not we want to finance a few of those projects to get them done as fast as possible. Like Carriage Hills Roof, Tomlin High, uh, Modest, Tomlinson and, and Lawton High.
Well, and the AC.
So we're, what we're doing is we're saying, we want you to use this money to go ahead drop the plans.
Right.
And figure out, you know, put it out for bid.
Get, get the documents ready for bid.
Go ahead.
You know, get the documents ready for bid and have the plans in place so that then we can approve to, to, to have it sent out for bid.
Okay, and that's what this.
And, and it's money that has to be spent.
Okay.
And we determined before, we could put this out for RFQ, but it would take quite a bit of time and we determined that AIP already had enough information.
About each of these bids.
On several of these projects, that it would save us money.
Okay.
And so, I mean, unless we really wanna break down and look real closely.
No, I don't care about that, I just wanna make sure I understood, you know, exactly because as, as everybody knows, I've only been on the board for a year, you know, this is a lot of different things that go on, I wanna make sure that I understand what we're doing, so that if it comes up later on, I don't think that I've already voted on it or not voted on it.
And the, and the, 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 the real critical question for me is, if we know we're gonna do these projects at some point in the future, which we have to, we have to do this step. If we're not gonna do them.
Oh, well, I know, we have to.
And so, before we can even make a decision, we have to have this step in place to know where our funding and everything else falls. And we got lucky on this last one, they came in cheaper.
And this money comes out of our 2004 bond?
2004 bonds does. Well, we actually have a little bit left cause those projects turned out to be cheaper, but this is 2014.
This is 2014 bond.
Oh, this is 2004.
I thought it was 2004, okay.
We paid for these plans, the other 2014 bond.
Okay, okay, I have no problem, then I'm ready to go.
Sure.
I need that a question answered.
I'll move for the consent agenda.
Okay, let me, let me.
Oh, we want to know the one, sorry.
Another question now, let's don't get excited. Okay, I noticed that on Ford, I mean, it looks like we have awarded him, or we're going to vote to award him the three, um, Carriage Hills, Tomlinson, and Lawton High for combination bid. My question is, why does it say 1.4 as the low bidder here, but then when you come over to um, this page back here, it jumps to 1.620 and it only says Carriage Hills?
Let me ask this question. If any item that we pulled out of the consent agenda, we should pull out for separate discussion, we should vote on the remaining of it.
That'll work.
Before we discuss all the other items.
Cause I, I do want to come out, cause I'm not saying I don't want to do that, I just don't have, I have that question.
You want, you wanna pull this on?
Am I correct, Mr. Led, on the consent agenda, anything we wanna discuss separately, we need to pull?
Yes.
And act on it, so.
Just wondering about this.
We've discussed all.
Yeah, let's pull.
So let's, idea, let's, let's ideally identify what we wanna discuss separately and then vote on the body of the consent agenda.
But there is no page number, so I can't.
Well, it's policy HC, I mean, it's not policy, but it's, it's a bid. HC4.a Roof Replacement Carriage Hills TMS LX.
Okay.
So we'd like to pull that item from the consent agenda, would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion.
Well, can I do that?
Yep.
I'll second.
And approve the rest of it, remainder?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now, I'll make a motion for the balance of the consent agenda.
There we go.
Can I second?
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now, and that's, that's.
And we go to HC4.a, so I know which one you're looking at. Um, now, my agendas is roof replacement, Carriage Hills, Tomlinson, Lawton High, and that's what the item on my agendas is.
Okay, so I have, I have here what it's all broke down.
Okay.
You know, you know, based on the low bidder, they broke it out into.
It's this one. Don't show any of them, cause he's on the computer.
And um, which was a base bid, which I understand that there's some alternatives and stuff in here, which probably jumps it to the 1.6 over here. But my question is on this one here, it only states Carriage Hills and that will concern to me.
Because I got your wrong.
Okay.
We've updated the agenda.
Yeah, that was my fault.
We've, you have the printed copy that was printed?
Yeah.
Okay, no, we have to have this be accurate.
We have, well, we've updated the agenda. The online, the agenda that was actually posted before.
Online, yeah.
Before the legal deadline is correct and it, Kathy caught that error and we corrected it before the board meeting.
Okay.
So the new agenda actually, are they actually correct agenda? Because you're requesting a printed copy, we're having to give you a printed copy before.
Let Denise know, she can let us know.
I have to have it in print, cause it's too confusing.
And so, your printed copy is not the actual.
Okay, so that is for authorizing.
Correct agenda.
With this, with the, okay, that's all my question was.
Yeah, so the correct agenda is, is the online version.
Yeah, that's, that was my only question. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't go in something incorrectly because it didn't have all three names.
Yeah, Ms. Bentley caught her mistake and fixed it. And she didn't make a lot of mistakes.
No, she didn't.
But when she does, she catches them.
She's human, oh my god.
Well, you just.
That's a sign, that's a sign of an awesome person, so.
You're gonna make the motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
This, this is what you know that I read, these things.
I did too, but I looked at mine, so.
Okay, let's see, where are we at? Item nine, proposed executive session, do we need one to move?
We do.
Do I have a motion?
Move for executive session, second. Where I am. You're at nine? I'm, I'm still in activity fund.
Do we need to take any of this?
Move on down the road.
I'm not even there yet, I'm just clearing out my personnel now. There we are. Okay, who made the motion?
Patty Boone. I'm seconded. Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay, bring up second.
Bring up.[1033.75]